This year, so we'll do it Saturday and Sunday.
Doing drama, we got a lot, we got enough drama.
Oh yeah, you wanna come?
Witness when you're not in the mood.
What time's your service?
Yeah.
Those are my schedule.
Yeah, I don't usually get involved, but I'm actually gonna do a character.
Oh, who are you playing in?
So, my name's Mary.
Ooh.
Like the Mary?
Not the Mary, not that Mary.
The Mary?
Right, the Mary?
Another Mary.
Oh, like there's, I was gonna say, there's a Mary, that's pretty important.
Yeah, exactly.
No, see, that Mary would be out of, out of time, right? Jesus is already being resurrected. You don't think she would fit, no, Mary Magdalene might fit.
Yeah.
Just saying, that's where it may be.
She was, she was, she did, that time.
Debbie. The mother of Jesus was at the crucifixion?
Well, she was, yes. My brain went to her.
Oh no.
Is it Jesus only, what, thirty-three, thirty-two?
Yeah, that's right, she was at the cross, she was at the cross.
Let's make sure we're using all the same Bible.
Yeah. Yeah. It's been one of those days.
We just have a little quick model lesson.
Who we went on?
Why not?
Me.
Yeah.
The one with the gavel.
Kyle's gonna soak this.
That's exactly. I knew there was a reason you came earlier last night.
He's got a long way to make, make sure.
We're not keeping score here.
There we go.
Sounds like he is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll call this meeting to order in the City of Kingfisher. Would you please join me in the flag slip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, do we have a prayer by Commissioner Taylor?
All right. If y'all would join me in prayer, the one true holy God, Lord, we come to you seeking your face and asking for your presence. Push back the darkness, push back confusion, push back ego and pride, Lord. Have your way in this place and set upon us as we make these decisions for you and your community. We know we are only vessels, so right now, move and be in the midst. Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, uh, roll call.
Here.
Jeff Cobalt.
Here.
Jeff Whitrock.
Here.
Kyle.
Here.
Debbie.
Here.
Item number two is the consent docket. If there's any questions concerned or anything need to be removed, if not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the consent docket.
Do we have a motion?
I'm sick of that.
Thank you. Motion carries, uh, next item, under scheduled business, item three A is the oath of office for Commissioner Jeff Whitrock. So if you'd join Jared.
We're gonna go try to do this thing.
You want me to move, you want to move that?
Ease them.
Huh?
How fancy do you want your picture now?
I don't.
You want to move all this?
No.
Slide it real quick.
That slide wasn't as easy as you thought.
It wasn't.
Here. Cover up the end.
He's calm just because he moved it down. He's gonna have to get closer here. But, all right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jeff Whitrock.
I, Jeff Whitrock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or any valuable thing.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Uh, for any act or duty pertaining to my office, sorry.
For any act or duty pertaining to my office.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As City Commissioner.
As City Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome back. Four more years. Four more years. The next item on the agenda is item three B, the discussion of possible action to approve reconstruction of a canopy at Newfield Park Baseball Complex. Do you want to speak on that?
I can speak on behalf of the Little League baseball team. Chase was gonna try to be here. His son had a baseball game in Oklahoma City at four-thirty, and there are other games going on at the junior high, anyway, nobody from his community can be here. As you recall, a year ago, we appropriated three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to make improvements to Briscoe Park. I've been meeting with soccer, the Little League, baseball, and the soccer team. They've had a representative at a meeting, we've had about three meetings, and each one has brought up different issues pertaining to their respective organization. Little League requested some LED lights, we ordered some, they paid half for those lights, we put them up, they're functioning, working well. Then they also approached me about dealing with the netting that goes over the concession stand behind home plate. It just doesn't catch a lot of the foul balls. I was there Saturday afternoon, there was a twenty-team tournament, over seven-hundred people were there, and in the three innings I was there, there were twelve foul balls. So it definitely does need some attention. They got two bids, they're willing to also make a contribution to putting that awning up to make it a little more safer. They're willing to put seventy-five-hundred dollars on the table to do their part, which is about fifteen percent of the total cost. I would recommend we spend the money. We've helped out the soccer team, we've taken other lights that we've had at the baseball field, put them on the soccer field, the soccer people are really happy with that. They have approached me, they've got a member of their board of directors that's willing to build the concession stand bathrooms at cost.
Talking about soccer.
Soccer.
Yeah.
And I said, well, I need something in writing, and I haven't received that yet, but as Kyle and I talked about at lunch, they better pick up the pace, because the money's been appropriated this fiscal year, it may not carry over to the following fiscal year, because we've got other needs that need to be addressed. So I'm trying to get these things addressed as we go along. The LED lights were less than twelve thousand dollars, they paid six, and we have some extra lights to address those. So I would recommend that we support them with this awning and get it done when we can. As I said, there were about seven-hundred people there. He told me earlier in the morning, I guess the soccer people had either games or a tournament or something, but he says there was at least another four-hundred people, so people are using Briscoe Park, and if we could help make some improvements to the quality of life, whether they're lights or awnings or, you know, whatever the case may be, I think it's to our advantage as a community, 'cause these twenty teams came from all over the state of Oklahoma.
Any questions?
Yeah, Jim, is the proposal of one of these two, I think one's fifty-five and one's sixty-five.
Yeah.
Is that going to be deducted out of the three-fifty, or is that gonna be in addition to?
Yes, it'll be deducted out of the three-fifty, yeah.
And so, my question would be, I mean, you know, we've tried to meet with them, all the different leagues on multiple occasions.
Yeah.
Seems like the baseball league is a little bit more.
Aggressive.
Aggressive in wanting to, and that's fine, but do the other leagues know that, I mean, obviously if we do fifty-five here, then that deducts from the total, and then therefore it takes away from the other league's ability to have those funds? Is everybody on the same page of being okay with that?
They understand that.
Okay, all right, just wanted to clarify.
And that's why I say, the soccer people have told me verbally, and I said, I need something in writing to take to the commissioners, you know, if you'll put a proposal together.
For their bathrooms and concessions.
Bathrooms and a concession stand.
Yeah.
And I said, I'm pretty sure, because the money's been appropriated.
Right.
For Briscoe Park.
Right.
Um, so I'm gonna press them, you know, we've only got a couple months in this fiscal year.
Any other questions?
Do we need to change this to Briscoe?
I did, and the motion, it's changed.
I have a question regarding this from a legal standpoint, I guess, if you will. So, the Little League received the bids, they provided that to us, we have an agreement with the Little League, but we own the, the park and the structure, the city does.
For ninety-nine years. We have a lease.
So, are we good, and as far as what's been received, that they've received, that they've provided to, I just wanna make sure the legality.
So long as you're under the competitive bidding threshold, which is at a hundred grand now.
Okay.
It's not the fifty that it used to be, if we were having this conversation, you know, two years ago, probably a different, different answer, but I think now, it's just that you've got to go get some kind of competitive bid, there's not a lot of structure on exactly how, so, so long as Jim has went through this, worked with them, said, yeah, these look good, I think we're fine.
Are you comfortable with what's written here?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, there's just not a lot of, will we issue a contract to the low bid?
I would think we would want something in writing from them, because it's, they're doing the work on our property, we would probably want some certificates of insurance and all of that kind of stuff from them, so yes, from that.
Probably a little bit more detail in design.
Yeah.
And, and coverage and stuff, I would like to see that as well.
Okay. All right, you've heard the presentation, do we have a motion?
Do we motion to approve pending COI and design?
Say again.
Do we motion to approve pending COI and design, or do we motion to approve to move on as it is, expecting to get COI and design?
I would recommend, I mean, the Little League folks have been pretty honest in their dealings, I mean, we helped them put the LED lights up, you know, we showed them what the invoice was, they wrote a check right on the spot for half. I'm assuming for him to get two bids, that this is something that they've done work with before on the awning. I have not seen a design, he tried to describe it to me when I was there Saturday afternoon, it made sense to me, but, I mean, I don't think it's anything complicated, I don't think we need an architect, you know, to design it.
I mean, just as long as everybody's on the same page as, knowing what we're purchasing, I mean, I hate to, I just, you know, spend fifty-five thousand dollars and it'd be very underwhelming as to what it was gonna be.
Subpar.
Yeah, subpar, you know.
I'll get some more information, I'll get some drawings or something, and.
Yeah.
Or even call the contractor myself, and say, hey, can you meet me out there and show me exactly what you're gonna do?
Yeah. So what, then that way, if it's anything different than what we're kind of expecting here, Jim can say, whoa, let's not give you the check before we can proceed.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's why I have a city manager to kind of run that interference for you all.
Okay, I understand the intent.
I'll motion to approve the reconstruction of the canopy at Briscoe Park with the caveat of Jim having permissions to collect COIs and approve the design throughout, how about that?
That sounds good.
Second.
That motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item three C, which is the discussion, possible action to discuss construction, estimate and square footage of the new fire department. Would you like to?
I can, I can open it up.
Okay.
I sent you a lengthy memo over the weekend outlining some of my concerns and how we've got, where we're at. I've had individual conversations with all of you, some things I take full responsibility for. When you gave me the authority last February, when we went out to search an architect, and we eventually awarded to BRW, you made it crystal clear that I have eight million dollars in cash to operate under, with about sixteen-five, or sixteen thousand square feet, but there's a five percent flexibility, which would take it to sixteen-eight. I wish I could tell you from today how we got to where we're at. Other than last October, when we met with the public, the fire chief reminded me in my PowerPoint presentation to them, that when we were asking for additional money and explaining the increase in costs, we were going from residential-grade material to commercial-grade material, we were estimating in October, on October seventeenth, about nine-point-one million dollars. A lot had happened, I issued a email to the architect on December nineteenth, which I shared with you, emphasizing the maximum size of the Kingfisher Fire Station shall not exceed sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred square feet, which falls within the five percent rule. Now, the attorney will tell you, when people use the word "shall not exceed," that is legal language giving direction to the architect and all the people associated with it. I think what we need to do is, I need some new guidelines, the fire chief and I have talked about this in nauseam, and I'm recommending three motions. One motion is to amend the current guiding cost of the fire station to increase from eight million dollars approved in the original architect contract with BRW to nine-million-one-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. This is supported by the public hearing and the information shared on October seventeen. The second motion is, I would direct the city manager to inquire from BRW, he is asking for an additional one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. Commissioner Mecklenburg and I had lunch today, and I have been wrestling with this thing for the last, since December ninth, I originally turned it down, and Commissioner Mecklenburg says, Jim, let's just take an average salary dealing with this one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand at two-hundred dollars per hour. That's six-hundred-and-sixty-two man-hours or sixteen weeks at forty hours a week. And I have been trying to get some kind of a quantification for this additional money that they're asking for, and I can't get it. And I think giving me this direction that Commissioner Mecklenburg outlined to me will be helpful. The third recommendation I'm asking for is give the city manager the flexibility to inquire with BRW principals, to inquire if a different architect could be assigned to finish the final twenty percent of construction drawings and complete the bidding and inspection of the fire department. This action is to be considered if a resolution can be resolved with Mr. Ray Holliday. I think further, the commission needs to emphasize to the public and BRW that the city manager is the only authorized officer to speak on behalf of the elected officials and as chairman of the building committee, as well as the chief administrative officer of the city, and all communications flows through his office. I know what the intention of the council is, I know what the intention of the public is, and I've had some disagreements with different people on this committee, as well as the architect, that they seem to know what the council told them and what the public is, you know, the perception of the public, and that is just one-hundred percent false. I know the pulse of this commission, and I know the pulse of the community. I care about this community, I want to get this fire station built. As you have heard me say over the last few weeks, we have got more needs than we have resources to meet, and this has got to be reasonably applied. The fire chief for both and I are in agreement with these recommendations, and I make that as forwarded.
Any questions of the city manager?
Okay, so the only increase.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, should I just word it that way? I have a question of the city manager.
You're good.
Is the only increase to, from, I just wanna clarify, I understand, but I just wanna clarify. So, we were at sixteen with the five square, sixteen-hundred square footage with a five percent flex or whatever. And the only reason we increased from eight million to nine, ninety-one-hundred or million, was because of changing from residential to commercial grade, right? It didn't have anything to do with adding or changing what's in the construction, but it was only changing from residential to commercial, correct?
Then, that's, chief, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I don't remember exactly how, 'cause we sat down and ran the numbers together.
Yeah.
And made the PowerPoint, and that's what the numbers would come up.
Right, so that's the only reason there's a change.
Change in material and then also adding certain systems too, that we would have to cut if we, if we stayed with the budget, right? So the exhaust system, the exhaust system is all I get, so I think it was a combination of changing materials to more industrial material.
Right.
Plus, adding some systems that were needed.
But it had nothing to do with square footage or anything like that?
From my understanding, it had nothing to do with increasing square footage.
Yeah, that's what I understood too. It has nothing to do with changing the sixteen-eight or the flex.
So in, in.
Right.
Sorry, Don, I apologize.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
So my question, Jim, would be, in Ray's, in, I should say, not Ray, but, who's it, BRW?
Yeah.
BRW's perception, somewhere there was some communication to them that we went from sixteen-thousand square foot to twenty-thousand square foot, and they designed something around twenty-thousand square foot, and that's where this additional one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars is coming from, is 'cause they've spent the time and the money to expand our facility, four-thousand square foot. Where did that communication come from?
It didn't come from the chairman of the building commission, it didn't come from the fire chief. It came, my memo was pretty explicit, he has failed to address it, I've asked him on numerous occasions, the fire chief and I had a conversation with him on Friday, and we forgot one item, because there's a provision that he says gross square feet is twenty-thousand square feet, and then there's a net square feet that you exclude electrical and attic space and everything else, it's eighteen thousand. He's refused to answer our questions, and so I don't know if he doesn't understand it or we don't understand it. Chief, have you got anything from him?
No. What's our, what's our contract with them say right now, today?
Our contract today says that, and he alludes to it in his email, you know, where he said, I had it highlighted, I did not warn Mr. Thomas or the committee that we went outside the scope, and therefore we're not asking you to pay for those hours. He admits, you know, I use the analogy, the last building I built was a library, and the elected officials gave me a certain pot of money to go build the library, and I had a committee, and I'd have a committee member say, you know, Jim, I think we need to add additional carpet or additional space, five-hundred more square feet in the children's library. And I said, hey, and the architect would raise his hand and say, hey, this is going exceeding over your budget, you know? And so I said, instead of me going to the commissioners every two weeks or every month, let's design what we want, and then we'll go to the commissioners and say, hey, this is how much money we need. And, you know, that was a different community than Kingfisher, it was more affluent, money wasn't, I mean, we had a two-million-dollar campaign just to raise money to help build the library. We don't have any kind of campaign here to build the fire station. And so he acknowledges that he didn't keep us abreast. The only set of plans we got were on February twenty-eighth, there were thirty percent plans. Friday, I requested him to Federal Express, I said, the city will pay for the eighty percent plans. I called him this morning, I said, hey, our Fed Express guy came, we didn't get any plans, are they still coming? But he was in a meeting, and then I reached out to him about four-thirty, and he was still in the same meeting. So, I don't know what to say.
So, as far as we know.
Nobody.
As far as we know, nobody that is authorized.
Yeah.
To make the decision to increase the size of this project, gave BW.
BRW.
BRW authorization to do that work.
That's correct.
Is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
So he's asking for one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars of work he may have done but was not authorized to do.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanna be very clear on that.
Have we already, like, number three, have we already sought for a person to be a mediator?
I have not, I have not, that came to me today, after individual discussions with each of you, and maybe Mr. Ray, Mr. Holliday will come to his senses, but if not, I, we're at eighty percent. The fire chief and I want to get this to the end zone.
Yeah.
Right now, we're on schedule to go out to bid the first week in June, and this nonsense of everybody telling me what the commissioners said, what they didn't say, or what the public feels, or what they don't feel, has got to come to a screeching halt. I'll take responsibility, after the election on January fourteenth, I probably should've put this on the agenda in February and said, hey, what are the new guide rails? Because we're gonna get an additional ten years from this half a cent.
But we're here now.
But, we're here now, I knew that I had other engineering firms looking at other infrastructure needs, and, and I think that's the biggest challenge, is trying to balance the needs of all the departments with the fire department. I mean, they definitely do need a fire station, this is a huge improvement over what they have now, and I just need to get this thing across the line, and BRW just needs to hear from the commissioners, what I've been saying is the gospel.
So, a couple things. On number three, your proposed motion on number three.
Yeah.
I would, I would, personally, I would like to see us work with BRW and get this resolved as best we can, in any way that we can that's mutually beneficial for everybody.
Yeah.
'Cause there's obviously been some miscommunication somewhere. It's, it would be, the odds of things being slowed down and/or much more difficult if we were to go with somebody else for that last twenty percent is there, and, of course, BRW understands that as well. They understand that the better, the better solution is for them to do, complete this a hundred percent. But I think we need to, we need to try as best we can to continue to work with them to get this thing a hundred percent. Now, that being said, if we're not responsible for any type of miscommunication or their decision to move forward with plans that were not authorized, and now they're trying to charge us for it, and they're not gonna go away from that, that's on them.
And I guess my plan is, if we adopt all three of these recommendations, I'm gonna go down to Callen Station and visit with them in their place, you know, because he's come up here a number of times, and it's just time for me to go down there and probably take the fire chief with me, and just make sure we have a meeting of the minds, because we're close to the finish line, and I wanna make it work, but I, but I can't keep working when he's not communicating.
Any other questions?
It's not so much, well, it is a question, and it's probably maybe a little bit for Jared. On number three, is it also possible to elicit, like, mediation, like, actual mediation?
I don't think we're to that point yet, are we?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I may, yeah, I got you.
The attitude that's already been expressed is pretty hostile, so.
Well, I think if we, if we have him explain how six-hundred-and-sixty-two man-hours at two-hundred dollars an hour, it should be pretty easy.
Okay.
Don, I'll back you a little bit, I think this is where maybe you're going, before we get to number three, we probably need to be at the table again.
Well, I know we need to be at the table, but I'm just, because of the other communications we are aware of.
Correct.
I feel like it's a possibility, when Jim and chief go down there, that they're still, whoever's on their side, there's still gonna be something left to the gray area that's gonna be hostile, does that make sense?
Yeah, but this, this leaves that open-ended for him just to say, done with you guys, go find another one, we probably need to be together before we do three.
Well, I don't think the intent there on number three is to change architects.
No, I don't want to change.
Just to.
Just in their, in their same company.
Within the same company.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if I didn't make that clear.
Oh, okay, that's, that's my misunderstanding, I thought you wanted to go out and get a different architect.
No, 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 no.
But deal with a different, deal with a different personnel within the same.
If it comes to that, the hope is that.
Okay, that makes more sense, I was like, that's what, that's why I was saying, if we try to go out and get a different architectural company to finish twenty percent, that's gonna, that's a disaster.
No, I understood that.
Yeah, I apologize.
So, okay, so that, I'm, okay, I see what you're saying now, all right.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Before you vote.
We don't have anything obligated there to probably come in.
Somebody can speak about any of this stuff?
I think there has been discussion, so.
Well, I mean, I got kicked off the committee, so I, this is my only way to get the information out.
Yeah. You can absolutely, you got, you can have three minutes, Tony, to discuss it, and, but as far as interaction, it's gonna be difficult, so go ahead.
That's sure, that's fine. So, let's start off with a little bit, there's a lot to go over, but I only got three minutes.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, as we were putting this together, we noticed that there was no storage. So, as we were putting this together, we noticed that there was no storage in that building at all. And so we asked for some storage. Jim okayed for him to put some storage in there, so there's some storage in there now. The stairs are, the stairs are on the back, they put a brick wall to enclose it, which is smart, because on a day that's going to be sleet, snow, rain, whatever, those stairs are going to be slick, somebody slips and falls, that's on the people that decided to take that wall away. Not counting if some kid comes back there and crawls up those stairs and falls. So it really should be enclosed. There's, Jim wanted to put brick the whole, the whole building, so that went up on price. There's a lot of things that got changed that's maybe not expressing here this evening, but here's one of the main things I would like to stress to you guys. We worked really hard for several years to get you guys to go out and extend the sales tax, because we were told it just, we don't have enough money. And if I'm not mistaken, the money that we were going to have from the old first tax was going to be eight, eight-point-five million, is that about right?
Somewhere near that, yeah.
So we're going to take this next eight-point-five million, take six hundred thousand dollars out of all of that, and put it with this and make this work? I'm embarrassed that we had to do that. I mean, if we're going to ask for another ten years, another eight-point-five million dollars, and we're only going to use six hundred thousand dollars, that's wrong. I feel like that is totally wrong to do. Not counting the fact that I did not send in a letter, like Jim said, I did not send in a letter promoting this grant from the federal government, two-point-five million dollars. Reason being is, I don't know if it's illegal or not, but morally, it's not right that we know we have the money, but yet we're going to ask for another two-point-five million dollars from the government? I don't think that's totally wrong. I understand you guys want to do infrastructure after you build the fire station, and that's, Lord knows we need that. But, you're not going to get to use that for another fifteen years, unless you go out and borrow the money and start to, you know, use the money that hasn't come in yet. There's a lot of things that's not getting shared tonight. I, I know there's some animosity between Jim and Ray, mostly Jim. He hasn't been very professional with him ever since day one. The only time he's acted professional with him is when you guys had a meeting at the chamber, and you were all there. It's kind of like kids out on the playground. You've got a couple of kids over there, this one's going to pick on this one.
Appreciate it, Tony, that's-
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, there's a long story to all of that, and I appreciate the information from both sides. Any other questions, comments, do we have a motion?
Do we motion these individually? Or are we motioning?
Yeah, I would recommend it individually.
Okay.
How are you going to do that? Because you need three separate motions, because they're going to be three separate agenda items, or how do you do it?
Just discussion on the agenda, even though, I mean, we have this-
Well, discussion, I've got a non-deliberate-
Oh, possible action.
Possible action.
It does say possible action.
Sorry.
No, I was searching for other things on the-
If we make a motion, will we just say we accept recommendations?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, Don, is since you've got the one agenda item, an agenda item to approve the recommendations for those three different actions for the city manager as he requested. My question would be, because I don't want to, I mean, I guess it's not a big deal, we can always come back and do amendments to, to the total cost of the project. Obviously, the nine-point-one million was six months ago, and I don't know if, you know, if costs have changed since then, and/or there's some items like Tony was saying as far as things that were, you know, recommended or added or whatever, that weren't specifically discussed, or in that presentation. Like, so what I'm saying is, do we, is it okay to do the one, nine-point-one-one now, and then if we see that the cost is going to go up, or whenever we sit down and say, "These are the things that we're going to change from the original plans"?
Can I clarify something here? We're basically telling the architect to design to this number, given the information he has.
Yeah.
He's not a contractor, he doesn't know what the costs are.
Right, okay.
He's working, maybe bouncing some ideas off of a contractor, but until you get this bid, you don't know what that number's going to be.
Yeah.
That's just the sheer reality of this, so that, that's what we're instructing. If you make this motion and it's accepted, we're just saying, "Hey, here's what we have, obligated for this." Recognize too, that there is also a contingency already in this. And part of the reason for going to that nine-point-one million, in my opinion, was the fact, if everybody will dial back a little bit, this started out at a five billion dollar structure. And it has exceeded to, it's gotten to the point where now we've doubled that, basically. It's going to cost us a whole lot more than doubling based upon a lot of different factors. So I'll just remind you of that, but this number is what they're designing to, not what the actual cost is. We have no control over it.
And I want to, you know, reiterate to the commissioners that this is for the construction. This is not the six hundred thousand dollars for the architectural fee, this is not for the financing charges and the interest that we're going to be paying on it and stuff like that. I mean, there's another, there's several million dollars on top of this nine-point-one million that we're going to be facing. So it's not a, this is not an all-inclusive number.
And that's been the-
This is, we're still, we're still looking at eleven to eleven and a half, twelve million dollar action that we're doing based off of everything inclusive.
So do we have, do we have a motion? I'd like to move on. Do we have any other questions? And you can motion whatever you'd like from this, so do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the three recommendations given to us about the new fire department square footage and the construction estimate.
Okay.
Second?
We have a second?
Your second, and I'm sorry.
Mr. Whitrock?
And this incorporates all three of my recommendations?
Yes, yes.
As well as my footnote?
Yes.
Okay.
Who, right now?
Jeff, there you go.
That motion passes unanimously as well. Next item on the agenda is the financial report, Ms. Anita.
Okay, we're seventy-five percent into our year. And on the city side, for this month, we got almost an eighty-nine thousand dollar loss. We did pay for some chemicals and insurance, but mostly it's just the, I have one account that I get big checks twice, two or three times a year, and it's five-two-two. We got checks in April from five-two-two for six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, which that's going to kind of tilt this scale.
Yeah, really.
Just a little. But it's just, sales tax wasn't doing great, it didn't do great again this month. Till I see the reports, I don't know why. Although, looking back historically, this is never a great month, unless they make an error and somebody pays a bunch of back tax. So, for the year, the city has a loss of a hundred and seven, which we have a projected a loss of a hundred and fifty-five due to some bills that we paid from last year and this year, so. But our sales tax did come in at, I believe it was like one-eighty-five, so we're way down here. Not the lowest in the last five years, but not a heavy number. Then, Public Works, we have a loss of two hundred and thirteen. We're still at a gain for the year of four hundred and fifteen. This is just the off-season, and in this, we paid forty-five thousand dollars in insurance. We had audit fees, fireworks deposit, and OWRB semi-annual payment of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, we're just, we're waiting for the air conditioners to turn on, because that's when we actually turn money a little better. But we are still, like I said, at a gain of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the year, so. And then the cash page, my go-to number, unencumbered balance is ten-point-three million dollars across all accounts. And actually, the audit's done, but auditors this time of year don't get out of the office because they also do taxes, so we'll approve the audit at the next meeting.
Any questions of Anita? Thank you, Anita. Next item on the agenda, agenda is three E, the city manager's report.
You've gotten three memos from me in the last ten days. I've told you about everything from A to Z. I appreciate your support tonight. We'll get this fire station built, ahead of schedule, under budget. I am going to be going to see my children over the Easter holidays, so I will be out of town Thursday and Friday. So, I do want to wish everybody a happy Easter, but it's definitely been a little stressful the last couple of weeks.
So, question-
Yeah.
Regarding on schedule and under budget, I know that we have had discussions that they were going to have this complete by March, then it was April, now we're talking. So what is the, what is the schedule? I know we're going to talk, what is it, a year to eighteen months to get it built?
Fourteen to sixteen months.
Fourteen to sixteen.
Yeah. As I shared with you earlier, the goal is to go out to bid the first week in June. It'll be out for thirty days, so I'm hoping we can, you know-
So you're advertising June one?
Yes.
And so you bid at late June?
Yeah.
After the twenty-one days, twenty-five days?
Yeah.
By the time you get contracts, you're talking August, probably, before you realistically, late August, early September, before you can break ground.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, you know, everything's weather-dependent, you know, you never know. They have inspected the ground, as I shared with you. It looks like we can build a fire station slab-on-grade. They originally were looking at putting steel pilings in, and they don't think they're going to have to do that, so. It's going to be a good building, you know? We're twenty percent short of the finish line, and I think the fire chief and I can go down to wherever BRW is from, College Station, and meet with the principals down there, we'll be able to get this thing back on track and get it, get it going.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So we are adjourned, we'll reconvene as the Kingfisher Public Works Authority. First item on the agenda is the consent docket. Any questions, concerns, anything we need to remove and reconsider? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
We're going to have to do my vote.
You got kicked off?
Yeah.
Don, do you need me to vote for you?
Yes, please.
Okay, why do you want to vote? Eee!
Oh, look, I'm up right when you touch. Can I go ahead and click, though? I came right up.
I already did for you, so I closed it.
That motion carries, consent docket's approved. Next item is discussion, possible action to approve twenty-ten Dodge Ram fifteen-hundred with the VIN number there, service truck from the water department to be surplused.
Commissioner Whitrock has recognized this vehicle. This is the vehicle that Jeremiah used to drive. It had some issues, we took it down to Johnson's, and it was going to cost like ten thousand dollars to make the necessary repairs, and I'm just recommending we surplus it. There is somebody interested in it, but it has no value. It's got over a hundred thousand miles, it's dented and dinged and, you know, it's got a lot of-
It's a used truck.
Yeah, it's a used-
It's a fifteen-year-old used truck that's been used and-
It's fifteen years old, so I just recommend we go ahead and salvage it or-
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to salvage the two-thousand-ten Dodge Ram fifteen-hundred.
Can you use the word surplus for me?
Surplus.
Thank you. Sorry.
I did say salvage, because he used salvage.
We're surplusing it to be salvage.
Surplus, yeah.
I knew what you were saying, but I just didn't know what the real word is.
Yeah, I do like two emotions a night, and I screwed one up.
That's subtractive.
Have a second by Commissioner Whitrock.
I'm the one that brought that inch into it. The one with no taillights and no headlights running around down.
Yeah, that's, that's the one.
That's the one. I think it has over two hundred on it, by the way.
Is it?
It's a lot.
The one that needed new tires, too?
Yeah. I don't know how you got away from the police so well.
The carries, next item, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Burpo. That motion carries, we're adjourned, we will reconvene as the Kingfisher recreational authority. Item on the agenda is item two, the consent docket. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the consent docket.
I'll second.
Go ahead. I have a second by Commissioner Burpo. That motion carries, there's no scheduled business, so I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
One second.
Would you like to have, you got a question?
Yeah, I've got a question. Jim, we haven't seen any numbers for the, for the aquatic center in a couple of months, or at least I haven't.
Okay.
Can we get those numbers of attendance and the financials for that?
Over a thousand dollars last weekend.
That's good.
That is good.
I'll get Savannah, I'll get with Savannah.
Yeah, no, that's a good, good point.
Now, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Ed.
Second by Commissioner Taylor. We are adjourned.